Are you all ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and get started this afternoon. If I could get everyone to stand. Councilman Berry is gonna lead us in the dedication.
Father in heaven, we come to you today and we just praise your name. Father, we thank you for the state, for the country we live in, and for the community we live in. Father, we thank you for your son and the reason that we're here. Please be with us, help us to guide the city the way we should in Jesus' name and prayer.
Thank you. Let the record show that we're all in attendance. We'll call the meeting to order. And Councilman Ellis will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. It's always a pleasure for us to welcome visitors and guests and receive public comment at this time. We're glad that you're all here. Ricky and Liz, we're glad that y'all are with us. Mr. Fields, it's good to see you. And we're glad all the staff's here. Brian, it's good for you to come, keep us out of trouble.
Yes, good to be here.
All right. And Gil, it's good to have you. It's at this time that we allow the public to give comment. If there's anyone in the audience that'd like to do that at this time, you're welcome to. If not, then we're going to begin our meeting. And I'm gonna turn the floor over to Chief. I think he's got some comments he'd like to make.
This is short. This is short. This is actually a very good thing. Appreciate it, Mayor, Council, appreciate y'all's time, everybody that's here. This won't take but a moment. I guess one of the things that I like most about having been a police supervisor over the years, assistant chief, captain, and so forth, and now y'all's chief of police, is every opportunity that I get to promote somebody or be involved with recognizing somebody's hard work. This is one of those occasions that over the last several months, we have worked a lot. There's been a lot of things we've had going on, a lot of hirons in the fire. And Liz has been an instrumental part in helping kind of clean a lot of stuff up and take care of a lot of things. In recognition of that, and also she's been doing this job for quite some time. As of Saturday, a couple days ago, but this was our first official day to recognize her, Liz has been promoted to dispatch manager. If Liz would please come up here so I can present her with her certificate of promotion. Hey, Liz, would you like to go over to the podium and say? No, I'm missing.
Yeah.
Here we go.
There you go. Make it official.
There you go.
Thank you.
Great. Would you like to say anything, honestly?
I thank you all. I love my job. You all make it easy for me. Congratulations. Thank you.
Appreciate y'all. Thank you, please.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and move on into our agenda. The first thing we would like to do is the approval of minutes of the January 14th meeting of this year. I trust you all read those, and I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is to receive the 2017-2018 audit report. And Mr. Fields, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you.
You should have a copy of the audit. My understanding is you've had the chance to look through that before the meeting and go through it. I know I take a lot of your time this afternoon, but there are a few things we need to discuss about the report itself. Turn over to the table of contents. Let me talk to you a little bit about the information that's contained in the financial statement that will help you as we go through my opinion when you talk about the terminology that we use in the table of contents and the financial section. You'll fit into the audit report, that's my report back here as a council. We will go through that today. The management discussion analysis is again required, U.S. requires, required by Government Accounting Standards Board. We will not go through that and encourage you to read through it. It's gonna give you a comparison of the two years that we have, and it's gonna use the government-wide statements, as we talked about government-wide. The basic financial statements is what I issue my opinion on, and as we look at it, the government-wide statements, we'll talk about those. And the fund statements is what we maintain your books and records on. We adjust the fund statements back to the government-wide statements as required, requirements that we do there. Under other required information, you'll have the two budgets as required again by Government Accounting Standards Board. It's gonna give you a comparison of the beginning balances and ending balances and actual budget figures that we have for the two funds, our major funds, and we do those by classification. The other information that you're familiar with, we talked a little bit about it in the past, is your pension liability with the Texas Municipal Retirement System that we have, that we record, that the information that we're required to accumulate, we're in the process of trying to accumulate 10 years' worth of information on that. What we have to do to the financial statements this year is what we call the Governmental Accounting Standards Board's 75. It has to do with the other post-employment benefits that are involved that we have, we call it OPEB plan that we have. The Texas Municipal Retirement System furnishes the information that we have this year as we adopted it for your life insurance portion of it that you have with them, so we recorded that liability there. I'm gonna talk a little bit more and get to my opinion about the OPEB, how they affected it. So if you'll turn over to my opinion on page one. As you look at the opinion itself, the first paragraph, the self-explanatory makes reference to the information that we make through the notes to the statements that we have. The second paragraph says management responsible for the financial statements. And it goes in to explain my responsibilities for the financial statements as they're done according to accounting principles, auditing standards. And those standards require that I plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free or material misstatement. The next paragraph talks a little bit about internal controls. We do not do, I do not do a detailed study of the internal controls, look at those controls as they relate to the procedures that I use. Again, we're gonna do the most efficient procedures that we can to accomplish what we need to do. The last paragraph, as we started, something new that we had. We talked about the OPEB liability. We have, the city has certain healthcare-related post-employment benefits that we offer to the employees after the retirement that they have. And 75 requires you to go back and do an actuary computation on that, and go back to really to get a beginning balance for two years, and look at the employees' ages that they have, we estimate the total cost into the future, and we take that figure and discount it back to what present day value would be. And I mentioned before, we do that on the retirement, we do that on the life insurance, but TMRF, the Texas Municipal Retirement System furnishes all that, they pay the people to do that. So the size of your system in this particular year, we decided that it wasn't efficient or economical to go back and do that. We're gonna go into work in accumulating all the data to do that, so it's not included in the government-wide statements. So if you'll turn to the page with me, we'll make reference to that. As you'll see, it makes reference, except for not including that, that the following financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position, change in financial position of the funds that we mentioned before, that will be qualified because of that, your governmental activities and your business activities are here. We did not include that by book. Again, we're not considering material to the financial statements, but it's not included. The next paragraph goes in to tell you that the governmental funds and aggregate remaining information that we have is presented fairly in the financial position and change in financial position according to accounting principles. The last paragraph just makes reference to the required supplement information that we talked about, that is not required in the basic financial statements. It has not been audited, but it's been compared to those statements, and obviously there's no material difference in that. Any questions you might have concerning the opinion itself? If not, it's very brief. Now, I'm gonna go through the financial statements, since you've had an opportunity to the basic financial statements and point out a few things to you. So let's look at page 11. As the follow-up, as we talk about the Governmental Accounting Standards Board 75, we're including your governmental, I mean, our government-wide statements that we're talking about here. We record all assets, depreciation, all your liabilities, just like any other business enterprise. This is not the way we budget, it's not the way you receive your monthly reports, but this is what we convert it to for informational purposes that we do. So you'll see your capital assets are recorded, and again, you'll have deferred outflows of resources. As we mentioned all ago, we talked about the actuary value. It's at a given point in time that they measure that. We measure yours at December 31st of 2017. So as we make payments and we do things into those, you're gonna have some deferrals that are prepaid and some liabilities that are there. We call those deferred outflows and deferred inflows that we have. And you see the liabilities that we have there for your net pension liability, and then as I mentioned to you before, the OPEB liability, the adjustments that we adjusted beginning balances, beginning equity or net position that we have during the year for that. And those are the liabilities that are furnished to us during the computation that we mentioned before. Turn the page with me. We'll look at the changes, the statement of activities. We spent again deeply consulted in putting all the depreciation that we have, removing any capital assets according to debt that we have. When you go across the page, you'll see the differences that we had. Very far columns, as you looked at the financial statements, you see the numbers that are there. That's supposed to be the net cost to our citizens for your governmental activities by each one of our functions that we have. The business activities, they're water insurers, recorded the same little funds that we have. The reason we say that is because of the general revenue at the bottom that we have, we're gonna allocate to any of our functions, any of the property taxes that we have, any of the earnings that we have during the year. Again, you'll see the changes in accounting principles that we mentioned before for governmental accounting statements, 75, that's the adjustment that we went back and adjusted beginning equity and back to that. You'll turn and look at page 14. Again, this is gonna be our governmental, this is our governmental funds that we have. This is where we maintain and make reference, what you get as you get your monthly reports. As you look through the reports, as you've had time and sure as you know, there's not any big adjustments that we made to the reports as you receive them monthly on those. I don't know of anything, other than you can look at each one of the fund balances that we have in our funds. If anything comes to question, you'll see the fund balance that we have in our general fund, our economic development, and then our other funds that we have, other special revenue funds and our debt service funds, that being the fund balance or any balance in those funds at the end of the year, that's gonna be listed there. The next page, as you look, is gonna reconcile the two statements together that we do, that show you the differences that they're gonna include in there, the things that are mentioned before. The operating segment that we have, that's before you, part of the statement operating expenditure, the adjacent fund balance for our governmental funds. You'll see the difference in the fund types that we have. Again, our general fund, economic development, we broke out as major funds that we required to, they meet the definition. The other funds, as you mentioned on the other page, they have the fund balances that are required to, as we're in our reporting separately. You'll see the changes, transfers, the debt, the capital outlay that we had during the year, and the changes, it's very close to exactly what we evicted in our general fund that we have. If you look back at the basic report, it shows you the changes in fund balances that we had during the year. Questions that you might have over any of that information? The next statement's gonna reconcile it back. Let's look at the last one we got, far as the basic financial statements, which is your water insurer fund. It's recorded on the same basis as we talked about for our governmental statements. We do report depreciation, we record the pension rate growth, we record the OPEB liability that we have in there. I think you'll see on the balance sheet on there. If you'll turn to page 19, you'll see the operations that we had this year and there. You'll see that we did have a small increase or an increase in our net position for the year, and that net position includes depreciation, removing any capital expenditures that we have, major capital expenditures that were working on for us, our water and sewer improvement that's been out there in the painting of the water tower. All those things are not reported here. Questions over the audit report that you've had time to read and look through? Questions about the opinion, the difference in the Governmental County Standards Board 75? If there's any questions, I might answer on that, but yeah. Don't foresee any problems with any of the reporting entities we have by doing this, the qualification of the opinion that we have. I don't see any problems with the bond, the fund, the financial statements. We're in the process now to start to accumulate that data. It takes for a couple of years, buying employee, estimating life expenditure, and it goes, like I said, you're gonna discount it back. It's quite an involved calculation to build and figure out what liability we're using for. Questions? Anything that I might answer? If not, we appreciate the input and the name and the rest of the staff's help when I'm here, and their willingness to help, and that helps me a lot. It's good to work with them. Appreciate y'all's things for the city, again. We appreciate you.
For staff who's frequently cooperating in furnishing everything you need?
Yes, sir. It's your work.
Take a look at everything you want to see.
It'll be everything I want. If I suggest something that I'm already working with, we're already talking about getting this other stuff done as far as the OPEB. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion to receive that report. Motion in the second to receive this report for any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. And we, thank you very much, Mr. Fields. We're looking forward to taking a look at things next year. Thank you. Now, next thing we'd like to do is look at more paperwork. And we're gonna have the Milsheu Police Department 2018 Annual Contact Data Report. And I'll turn it over to you, Chief, and we'll see if anybody has any questions.
Well, y'all have received the report. It's obviously a lengthy report, as required by state law in regards to our contacts and racial profiling and so forth. Let me know if you have any questions. It's indicative of our community, our demographics and so forth, in terms of what officers have observed over the last year. Let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
I have some. First of all, I wanna know how come you stopped twice as many men as you do?
Honest, sir, I mean, until an officer walks up to a vehicle, they have no idea who's stopping, most of the time.
Does that indicate to you that women are better drivers?
No opinion whatsoever, sir. They're taking that on its face, that officers are out there doing what they need to be doing, and doing it the way they need to do it.
The other question I have, and I'd just like to have your opinion, is why we give four times as many warnings that gets as weekly a citation?
My opinion is, sir, I think we're a community that tries to seek voluntary compliance in terms of traffic enforcement, and officers are out there trying to balance that between proactive enforcement and voluntary compliance. And that's, that's the way the last year shaped up was, that there wound up being more warnings than there was citations.
I always feel like that you pretty much target criminals, and that's kinda the way the data report turns out. I appreciate that. Anybody else have any questions?
I appreciate the, the report.
It is. Appreciate your officers and everybody that's in your department, all the hard work they do.
Is there John?
Motion to receive the report. Motion in second to receive the annual police department report. Any other discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Withstanding.
Y'all keep up the good work. Next thing we'd like to do is to consider a request for the hotel-motel tax funds from the Milsheu Roadrunner for the 37th Annual Milsheu Roadrunners Motorcycle Route. Now, in that request, they have requested $2,500 in hotel-motel tax funds. Council policy is to provide up to $2,000 per request of approved receipts and stuff. I'll make a motion that we approve up to $2,000. In the second. And we have a second. Any other questions or comments? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Next thing we would like to do is to consider the election services contract with the Milsheu Independent School District. And we all let you explain that, that's something we usually do when we have an election.
Yes, sir. It's an election season, and this election service contract just lays out the responsibilities of the school district and those that the city will perform for them in this election season. So this agreement was actually, this contract was actually considered by the school board at their January meeting. So they've approved that. Again, we feel like this is something, it's a great way for us to serve the community, a way for us to all work together to accomplish the election for the school board in conjunction with the city and the hospital district. So we would ask council to approve that election service contract.
I'll make a motion to approve that contract.
Second.
And we have a second. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Next thing is to consider that election services contract with the Milsheu Hospital District.
The very same thing.
Same thing goes.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve that contract. And we have a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is order a city, a general election to be held May 4th, 2019. This covers City District 1 and City District 2.
Yes, sir.
Currently held by Coldeles and Luthman Dozen. We just have to do that, that's.
That's right. We're having a general election.
I'll make a motion to order the election.
No, second.
We have a motion in the second to order that election, May 4th. Is there any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Next thing we would like to do is to discuss an option of an ordinance prohibiting, prohibiting recreational vehicles parked on city streets and possibly set a date for a public hearing on this subject.
Yes, sir.
Is that part's optional? Give one. That part's optional?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
So I've been approached.
While we're doing there.
Yes, sir, as some of you possibly, concerning the problems that are created by recreational vehicles parked on city streets. This item just offers you the ability to have the discussion on that subject, and then if you choose to set a date for a public hearing, if that be the closure of the council. From time to time, we hear from citizens who believe that certain things should not be allowed in the city, and as is with this, we have someone that has moved an RV that's parked on the street in front of their house. Today, I've drove around, looked all over town, I actually found three RVs that are parked on the street. But anyway, this just gives council the opportunity to discuss that and then give staff any direction that you would offer.
Brian, what would an ordinance like that generally say?
Well, I mean, it depends on what you wanted to say. I mean, there's a lot of flexibility in these ordinance that, you know, some, you could do a lot of different things with it. But it also, if you're gonna do it for recreational vehicles, then it should probably apply to any watercraft, you know, maybe if they're boats or trailers or other items as well. So that's something to consider.
That's what I was gonna ask, when you say recreational vehicle, was you strictly saying RVs, or are you defining recreational vehicle?
I can tell you, today, I sent out an email to Panhandle and South Plains, city managers. And I have 10 ordinances, and they vary from very broad to very direct as to what they allow and what they disallow. There's one city, they allow RVs, motorhomes, travel trailers, whatever, to be parked in front of a residence, but only for a very limited time. Some include everything from those items I just mentioned to boats, trailers, you know, stock trailers, any number of things. Like I say, as broad or as narrow as you want that to go.
That's one of the things I was curious about was, I've done it myself, and I'm sure there's other people during the holidays when you have a long company, and park a travel trailer out in the street and use it for a spare bedroom or whatever. But I could, I wouldn't have a problem with that being for a limited time. I wouldn't be opposed to that at all. And I don't really think most people would, but I don't know that.
It looks like a 10-day period?
Yeah, five or 10. I mean, I think that ought to be.
The city that I thought to today, I mean, theirs was like 72 hours. And something else.
Summer up to a couple weeks, to address that size issue.
And then to keep in mind too, you know, we have a free RV park here that allows a place for folks to park.
Yeah.
Also, it's not like an extra bedroom at your house, but we do have a place for it at.
I mean, I could even see people coming in from a trip, leaving it there for a couple days, I don't know their stuff, but I don't think the street's a place to store your recreational vehicles, other than being RV, a boat, jet skis.
Yeah, trailers and four-wheelers. I agree. I mean, I don't think it needs to sit there, but yeah, for a very limited time, like I say. People come in for the weekend with a boat. They, they're gonna clean it, most people are gonna clean them up. And if you come in here at seven or eight o'clock at Sunday night, you gotta get them to a workplace for them, certainly you're not gonna sit out there till then not cleaning up your boat. I could see where a limited time would be okay, but I'm just like, I don't think that would be a place where you store it.
I will tell you, you know, we say we have 2,000 utility accounts in town, and like I say, today, driving around, a soft three.
Yeah.
So it's a very small number that we have.
Would we be able to regulate that any if it's parked up on our property, but creates a hazard?
Yeah, 'cause there's kind of the similar public safety issues, but then you're weighing private property issues on there. So there's a balancing there. You know, and the example that's common is, well, they can park if it's, you know, if they've got a paved park spot, but if they're, you know, I mean, that's with the cars more than the RVs, but I mean, that's where you kind of balance that public safety versus, you know, private property rights.
And there are some things too, if I'm not mistaken, Chief and I visited about And there are some things too. If I'm not mistaken, Chief and I have visited about this to some degree, and we've talked about, you know, how this is addressed with the transportation code and some things like that. If there are clearly hazards or violations there, you know, those can be addressed with the transportation code. But the ones that we've looked at specifically, the real one that we were approached about, it does not violate the transportation code.
I took a couple hours Saturday morning and rode the entire city. And I think I ran onto the same three that Leanne ran onto. There was a fourth one this morning about eight o'clock. The staff man, when I came into town, they had already unloaded and put it away, and it was gone. So, you know, that's not very many.
It's not. But I do know, and I've seen this in the past, and listened to people complain about it. It wasn't specifically RVs, but it was trucks parked on the street. And I've experienced it firsthand. If it's a busy street, that makes it awfully difficult to back out of the driveway without getting smacked, because you can't see around it until you're already out there. And without that sitting there, you have a lot better view, you know, down the street.
We have crossed that bridge in the past about trucks and large trailers and things like that. And we had a couple that were actually traffic hazards, and the people were more willing to relocate them somewhere else.
Yeah.
You, when you address an issue involving trucks and things like that, then you're actually addressing the way people make a living.
Sure.
And that gets into, to me, a little different category. Sometimes I...
Well, I'm just comparing it to the same, the same hazard. I mean, it's not the same situation by any means, but...
I don't know if three RVs is worth a city ordinance or not. And sometimes I feel like we should have less government than more.
I take your...
But I think, I think if you want to address that, I mean, it could be a good idea to have it on a limited time basis, to where you weren't allowed to park there over a certain length of time, and then you couldn't drive it around the block and park it again.
Yeah.
Somehow.
Right. I don't think we should justify it by how many there are, because if it was parked around your house or affecting you or affecting, you know, it could just be one that affects three or four neighbors. It's justifiably a problem.
But does three or four complaints actually justify doing something that affects the whole city? That's what I'm curious about.
Well, I don't care if it's one person that comes to me or ten persons that come to me. And if there's a problem, then I think it needs to be addressed. I don't have to have numbers to justify it.
If that ever happens where once somebody backs out of one of these things, someday it gets deepened and sends somebody to the hospital, was it worth it? Well, yeah.
Well, again, I would just say to that, you know, in looking at this, we've determined, you know, through the transportation code, there's not any violations there as far as that goes.
But even though if there isn't violations, but it still could cause a hazard. Maybe it doesn't violate the law.
True.
Well, and two of the ones that I ran across have been there for months of my years, and I would always wonder why somebody hadn't run over them yet.
While they still...
Even though they are not in front of the residents, they're on the side street. On my street, they would have already gotten run over.
I would like to draft an ordinance. It's my opinion. I would too.
Or you could have a public hearing, and you could accept public comment about that.
I don't think that's a bad idea at all. But obviously, if nobody shows up, then...
I feel like public hearings here are usually ninety-nine point nine percent always a waste of our time.
They frequently are, but at least you give the public the opportunity. Whether they take advantage of it or not, we've covered ourselves.
How about if we get Leanne and the staff to find us an ordinance that has some time limitation on parking for recreational vehicles? What y'all want to cover is recreational vehicles. You have buckets that covers RVs, motorhomes, boats, trailers, and most traveling time.
Yeah.
So the utility trailer?
It might have a time for utility trailers.
I don't think utility trailers are going to cause a problem unless they're... Now, the only place I could see that happening is if this house has one and they parked it in front of this house, you know.
Unless you live over where Mrs. Mendoza lives. If you have a neighbor on both sides of the street, park your trailer in front of their house. Then there is barely enough room for one vehicle.
And you're talking to two. That's true.
Where I used to live was really bad. It was real narrow.
All those streets there are very narrow.
Down, they always made that for trees. They're really narrow.
Because they were built for horses and codies.
Well, they built that sound properly not to get around it.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, what you'd like for us to do is to at least come up with some options, something for y'all to look at. And so do you want to set a date for a public hearing or no? No? Okay. Okay. So staff will get to work on that, and then we'll come back to council with something.
Is that okay in their way?
Yes.
Get them to take a look at that.
Okay.
I mean, since you have access already to some of them.
Yes. Yeah, and I expect in the next Saturday, I'll still get some more. And then with that, though, I will tell you, you know, there have been some that have said, City of Borger, I think it was, they actually drafted an ordinance. They went for their, came to council with their first reading, and they had such a uproar from their citizens that it didn't even pass on the first reading. So, because we're publicizing and this will be outlook, you know, you may get some other responses as well, you know, the other side of the story. So, but in the meantime, we'll get to work on that and come back to council with something.
Appreciate it.
Also, if any of y'all have time sometime, take a couple hours and drive every street in the city of Millshue. You'll learn a lot of things.
Yeah, the first thing you'll learn is RVs are not the biggest problem.
That's okay.
All right. Moving on from that. Next thing we'd like to do is receive the financial statement for the month that ends January thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. And I trust you all reviewed that, and I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions or discussion? Not all of you in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those both no? Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is to address the administrative reports.
Mayor, in an effort to continue having a healthy workforce, the city will hold a wellness clinic on Tuesday, February twenty-sixth, for our employees and their adult dependents. We've been doing this now for several years and actually have been able to take care of some issues with employees that maybe they didn't know that they had. And so we feel like this is worthwhile, so we continue that. A new feature available now to our region is text to nine-one-one. This feature allows a caller to contact nine-one-one by text in an event that they're not able to call. So, or if they can't communicate because of a threat or in a dangerous position. So this is something new. We're excited about this. We think that this is a really good thing, and our dispatch is able to accept nine-one-one text now. So you'll be seeing more and more things like that. We've got something out on Facebook right now. I think Gil has some information on that. So we're excited about that opportunity. Eighteen of our staff and employees participated in a CPR and bleeding control class that was instructed by our local EMS professionals on Friday, February the first. The course and the hands-on training we received better prepare us to serve our citizens. So that was very informative. We really appreciate our EMS folks for coming. We had four of them to be there to teach us about that, and we felt like that was very worthwhile. Speaking of that, Jean Wilton, one of our local EMS professionals, was awarded the two thousand and nineteen Advanced Medical Technician of the Year by the South Plains EMS. So that's a big feather in our cap for Millshue and Bailey County. So if y'all see Jean, be sure and congratulate her. Currently, three candidates have filed for places on the ballot for the city general election. Juan Chavez and incumbent Colt Ellis have filed for City District One. An incumbent Libby Mendoza has filed for City District Two. The deadline for, to file for a place on the ballot is five o'clock on Friday, the fifteenth. So folks still have time to file if they're interested in serving. Alan Smire has filed for District Two for the hospital district. District Four is also up for reelection, but no one's filed for that place as of this time. The school district has two at-large positions up, as well as a special election to fill a vacant seat. Ashley Turnbull filed today for one of the at-large positions. Then Ava W. Broadband has notified customers that February the twenty-eighth will be the last day for service for our cable, local cable company. So if you know of folks that maybe perhaps have not made a decision on what they're going to do for television, their cable is going to go away as of that day. They have some options. They're a local cable company. Also have some options with some satellite service, some other things. Gil has been working on that. Would you like to give some information on what you've done for that?
Well, some of the senior citizens to mitigate the loss to Channel Six on the cable for some of the people that can't use our website or our social media outlets, we're in the process of setting up computer and TV systems to do a kiosk setting, which is exactly what you see on the cable now when you look at Channel Six, to where it shows our programming from the newest piece of file to the oldest, and it starts over, and it rotates like that, you know, all day and all night. Well, we're going to set up a TV and a computer system at the Senior Center on Main Street, one at the community room at the Harmon Elliott Senior Citizens Housing Complex, and in one of the sunrooms at Parkview, to where those residents and those people that visit the Senior Center will, can come in there, and any time of the day or night, they can have access to Channel Six. And then I'll curate the content on those three computers, you know, as we take, take in news, make new stuff, and I'll take it. I'll either put it through the internet onto those computers, or take it through a flash drive and put in new content, take out the old content two or three times a week. So, you know, all of our content will still be available to those people there.
I think that's been one of our greatest concerns, is how residents were still going to be able to receive the news that they receive on Channel Six. Channel Six has served us well for lots and lots and lots of years. And so that's been a concern, or how residents are still going to get that news. And so we appreciate Gil and his work in doing that and still being able to get that information out.
First of all, this has helped, helped out a lot too in getting this done. But we hope to have that done the first week of March.
And then finally, today, Commissioner's Court met, Bailey County Commissioner's Court, and the burn ban is back in effect. So today, with wins what they've been today, what we expect from them to be this week, we would just really urge citizens to be really, really careful. That's really a concern for our local volunteer fire department, which is something that concerns all of us. So we really urge citizens to be really careful with fire this week. And that's all I have, Mayor.
One of the things we could do about that is price rent.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. You guys get to work. All right. If there's nothing else, I guess we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for being here.
Thank you.